We're going to convene, first of all, we do, Maureen Carney is actually coming. She was originally excused, but she's just back to me and said she probably is not. So Laura, would you please call the roll?
Sure.
Council Dray.
Here.
Council Carney.
Council Klein.
Here.
Council Rourke.
Here.
All right. We have a forum, so this is the meeting of September 24th of Legislative Matters. And we're all in our places with the right Chinese faces. Right now, if anyone wants to speak, we're opening this up for public comment. Fred, you want to have a?
Yeah, maybe I should speak. My name is Fred Zimnoff, Ward 3. And I'm interested in the change in the cemetery ordinance, which would be Chapter 153. And previously, in old ordinance, the city was allowed to take 6% from the trust fund. And generally, at least in my mind, trust funds should be conservatively managed. They probably need a bond fund. In that case, if you look at, for example, a 10-year bond for the last 10 years, it's been, I think it touched 3% at one time, then it's been below 3% until just recently, I think it topped up over 3%. So the change in the ordinance, namely to reduce the 6% to 3%, makes sense to me. I think preserving the trust fund to the cemetery is important because the cemetery has a lot of historical value. That's really great for the city. The other thing that I see in the legislative ordinance is that they're changing the assessment of the trust fund with a 20-point rolling average. And basically, what that will do is it'll chop off the peaks in case the fund goes very high, you won't be taking on a lot of money. On the other hand, it sort of raises up the values, so the treasurer or city collector or whoever's in charge might have to use a little discretion if the fund goes down a little bit. But basically, I think it's a great idea. The only part that really concerns me is that the way this is written is it says that it replaces Chapter 53. And basically, Chapter 53 has a lot of sections to it. It has Sections 4 through 16. So the question I have is what happened to Sections 4 through 16, which I think are important? And one final question I have that you probably can't answer, and that is how do we see an annual report of the trust fund? And what's the value of the Clark's Trust Fund?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in fact, actually, when that item comes up, you actually read it.
Yeah.
Reiterate your questions, but they've already been heard, so we can probably. If anyone else wants to speak, some public comment at this point. Now, this, well Legislative Matters precedent's been established, actually, by Councilor Murphy and his administration. So we will allow comment during the, as the items come up. So if you want to speak to item specific, we can do that, it'll probably make it easier for you. Or if you just want to speak generically right now, you're welcome.
My name is Hank Abrashkin. I do have the parking on a dare place item here, so I wait until that?
Yeah, yeah, and yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that would probably be better. So we'll move right into the agenda, and there has been a request to move the cemeteries up. That doesn't sound right. On the agenda, in any event, to address some of the questions that Mr. Zimnoff has and that maybe the councilors have, and move on that item first. Are there any objections to that? Okay. So this, I'm sorry.
Would you like to move that we also move the dare place up?
Sure. Well, yeah, okay. Actually, I should note that Item 18.123 and Item 18.125 are not going to be addressed today because they're actually still in committee at TPC. So that, we are automatically sort of dropping down to the next ones. But so what we'll do is we'll, given the fact, judging by the look of the audience, we're going to reverse this a little bit. We'll talk about cemeteries, we'll talk about dare plays, and then we'll talk about the order to strengthen Democratic representation of housing authority. And those first three items, okay? And that just sort of leaves Councilor Nash here hanging till the end. So first up, this is, this is an ordinance to amend Chapter 153 in cemeteries. And that's what you heard Mr. Zimnoff referring to. And actually, why don't, actually, and we have a solicitor here, so actually, if you wouldn't object, would you want to, you want to break this down, at least to address some of the, can you, okay, but we'll?
I get to object.
You get to object? You get to opine?
Do we have to put it on the floor?
Yes, we'll need a motion to put it on the floor.
Someone?
Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So I believe that Mr. Zimnoff brought up the issue of the former ordinances and the 6% number, and it causes us to look at this cemetery ordinance more closely. Much of what Mr. Zimnoff was referring to in terms of the other sections that have been eliminated are all now dealt with by the Cemetery Division of the Department of Public Works. That's an executive function on the running day-to-day of the cemeteries. And so if you go on the DPW's website, the Cemetery Division, you'll find all of their regulations that cover all of these, these relevant sections that are now being eliminated. So that, that's my response to the question about what about those other sections that have important stuff in them? There are now regulations in the DPW Cemetery Division.
Other questions, discussion on this floor? Nothing? Fred, are you comfortable with that response?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the motion, oh, Councilor Nash?
I just want to say, this is a great, this is a great example of the city listening to its citizens. You know, Fred met with the mayor. He noticed this inconsistency and brought it up, and it prompted the mayor and the city solicitor to take a look at it, and here we go. We're changing something. And good work by Fred, and nice response by the city.
All right, Fred, look for the head lumps. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor of sending this forward with a positive recommendation to the council, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Next, a dare place. Let me see, that's item, that's Item 18.138. I'm sorry, Laura, we're jumping all over the place here for you. This is an ordinance relative to parking on a dare place, and this is referred to us on July 12th. And I'll accept the motion, put it on the floor.
I'll move that. Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Hello? Hello.
What was you saying?
Well, I appreciate you addressing this. A dare place, are people familiar with a dare place? There we go. It's a lovely street, but it's a narrow street that goes down from Prospect Street near the YMCA and ends at the bike path. And it's, as I said, it's narrow, and it's, parking is a little tough. So I think I can give you the background of what happened in about 60 to 90 seconds. The residents of the street, or of course, like everywhere, are concerned about parking, got in touch with Rich Parsolli, because even though on the side of the street near town, which would be on the eastern side, there is pretty good no parking zone. It's not, wasn't that clearly marked, and cars parked there a lot. So we got in touch with him and asked him if he could add to the signage, and he very kindly came down, and he did. In the process, he observed that on the other side of the street, on the west side, on the right as one is going out of the dare place, the no parking zone sign didn't have a supporting ordinance. So he removed it. And that's when I learned that every sign in the city has to have a supporting ordinance. So we're here, I'm kind of the spokesperson for the people who live there, just trying to go back to go and get that sign replaced. So the no parking was the way it always has been for the 15 years that I've lived there, probably a long time before. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Nash, do you want to?
I think Mr. Abrashkin has pretty much summarized everything. The idea here is that, yeah, the city went out to address signage concerns and found that there was inconsistencies with what was on the ground and what was in city ordinance, and began applying what was on the books, and that prompted this process. TPC reviewed it and felt that the original conditions were just fine. And so that's, we're basically had, what you have before you is to bring us back to what the people on the street thought was there in the first place.
Any questions?
Well, just a comment, this isn't that we're coming up against this in a few other, we dealt with this with Hooker Avenue, you know, where there are signs that don't jive with what's on the books.
Right.
And sometimes it's not found out until something else like this happens. So I'm glad we're able to kind of nip this in the bug, at least with a positive recommendation from TPC.
Yes. I'm afraid, actually, this is going to come up.
It's going to keep happening.
There was, essentially, back in the day, someone would request something of their council, or council would say, "By shit, but it will be done." They would tell the DPW, and they'd just go plant signs like, like flowers. But, you know, we're not like that. But in the, but in situations like this, usually, they're not investigating all of them, but when there's an actual request or something, then people like Rich Parsolli will research and realize, okay, this is a spot we've got to clear up. In fact, actually, we're addressing this over and over again, as Council Carney pointed out. So there's no, any further conversation on this discussion? All those in favor forwarding this to the council, the firm of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Any suggestions?
Thank you very much. And if I could just get some clarification on where the process goes here?
It'll go to the council. It'll have to go to the, it'll be on the agenda for the council, and then we vote on that. And we're just, basically, as a committee, we have just, we have made, we recommended so as transportation and parking, I like its chances in the council, but I can't guarantee anything, so.
And any indication when that's going to be, before the council?
October 4th.
October 4th, the next meeting?
Oh, boy.
What's that?
In two readings.
It'll be twice, so the 4th, and then again the 18th.
October 4th, I'm scheduled to be out of the country, unfortunately.
You are, well.
So is necessary for somebody to be there?
Not necessary. And in fact, actually, Hank, if you, rather, you can write a letter, and you can send a letter to, you send it care of Laura here, the administrative assistant on the city council, she'll share with all of us, and we'll have that on record. As you can see, this is not one of the burning controversies, so I don't expect a lot of trouble, so, but it's perfectly acceptable for the public record for you to submit a letter.
Great, well, that'd be great. Another option would be to move the consideration to Puerto Rico, where I'm going to be, if you'd like to.
Well, that's, yeah, that sounds awful.
Is there anything?
And then we'll do it.
Yeah, they want the travel budget?
Our trouble budget will get us a chicken. We'll meet you halfway.
I'd just like to thank everybody very much, and I'll send a letter, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, so.
Thanks a lot, Jim. Thanks for talking to you.
Next up, this is Item 18.142. And this is in order to strengthen the Democratic representation of the Northampton Housing Authority. And I understand that there's been some, some ongoing discussion, but first I'll accept a motion and put this on the floor.
Put it on the floor?
Okay.
It's on the second.
The second, okay. Okay, we got it. It's on the floor. The sponsor of this ordinance is here, and I would invite Ryan to come up and speak to this.
Definitely, absolutely. I'd like to go on record by telling the committee, before I park anywhere, I read the entire code of ordinance.
I'm sure.
And I try to report it.
It's hard to give up the transportation and parking, it's in your blood.
It's quite. Should I just give kind of a brief introduction?
Please, yeah.
I think, as you know, part of the genesis of this was one incident this summer, but I'd like to sort of convince you by the end of my remarks that this is a proposal which is not about one incident, it's about structural reform. It's not about the current Housing Authority board members, it's about the future. And I'd like to ask that we may be considered in the same way we consider our charter changes, which is divorced from the actual people doing the jobs at the time, thinking of what's best structurally for the institution. The incident, of course, was the removal of air conditioning units from at least one building in the middle of a heat wave. This was a policy decision that I don't believe was approved by the Housing Authority Board. That's my understanding from my conversations. Okay. And the reason that concerns me is I think a healthy Housing Authority Board exercises some oversight of the policies that are made by the Housing Authority management. So the question I would have is, why was there not a culture of needing to consult with the Housing Authority Board members? As I said, it's not just about that, so I'd like to kind of run down what I think those responsibilities are of Housing Authority Board members and kind of discuss the structure of it. And I apologize to the council from Ward 7, because they gave the same boring presentation one week ago in a different committee, but I think the details are important. And we often overlook them because Housing Authorities are sort of off on their own, they're sort of legal islands. As you know, we don't exercise any direct control over them at all. So it's Master and All Lodge, Chapter 121B, that establishes all the Housing Authorities in Massachusetts, of which there are over 250. According to that chapter, they are, quote, "managed, controlled, and governed," end quote, "by a five-person board." The Training Manual for Local Housing Authority Board Members, 2014 Edition, states that the responsibilities of local boards include, but are not limited to, some of these following things. Setting and revising policy. Establishing annual operating and capital budgets. Ensuring integrity and professionalism. Ensuring compliance with federal, state, and local laws, guidelines, rules. overseeing all aspects of employment of the executive director. Maintaining good community relations. Encouraging and supporting tenant participation in the administration of public housing. And advocating for low-income housing in the interests of the residents. So they're fairly broad responsibilities, but I think we clearly defined also. The structure of the boards, the same chapter of law, Section 5, lays out the structure. They vary based on whether a Housing Authority is in a city or a town, or whether they are regional and involve multiple communities. In a city, like Northampton, the governor appoints one member, and the mayor appoints four with council approval. Recall, we just did that at our last meeting. That law provides that of the four, one must be an organized labor representative, one must be a tenant, and the other two are just citizens. In a town, it's different. The non-gubernatorial members are elected by the voters of the town. Interestingly, as I researched this, I found out in 2014, the legislature passed a law called an Act Relevant to Housing Authorities. This was Chapter 235 of the Acts of 2014. And that reform changed the number of non-governatorial appointed or elected commissioners in town from four to three. And it made the fourth one that would be elected by the tenants of the Housing Authority. It also said, of course, that regulations were needed to specify how you would conduct those elections, and it asked that DHCD promulgate those. To my knowledge, I'm not aware that they've actually been finalized, those rules about how to hold tenant elections, which is kind of a failure since it's been a long time since 2014. The law also directed DHC to implement a comprehensive training program for the members of Housing Authorities, including technical assistance training for tenant members, and educating Housing Authorities on topics including the open meeting law and state ethics law. So it sort of contemplated how this would go if, in fact, you had a tenant member in town that was elected by the tenants. So of course, you need to make sure they're trained, knowledgeable about the law, and of course, you need a way to actually do this. And finally, a pre-existing section, which you should know about if you contemplate the structure of this, of Section 6, provides for a mechanism for removal. Again, this had been there before. You can remove any board member in a city by joint mayor, city council action, including inefficiency, neglected duty, misconduct, those kinds of things. There's no perfect structure, in my opinion, that I put one, put forward one proposal for your consideration, some discussion of other jurisdictions in the region, and then one federal piece of information to give you, and then I'll conclude. New York State Housing Authority Boards range from three to seven members. In certain size cities, two members must be tenant commissioners elected by tenants. It's New York Public Housing Law, PGV, Section 30. Connecticut municipalities, the five boards must include one tenant. If there are seven, excuse me, five-member boards must include one tenant. If you have seven members on a board, you need two, and those are similarly elected by the tenants and/or tenant organizations. And the federal information to give you is, current federal regulations expressly affirm just the general importance of tenant participation in Housing Authorities. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, this is Regulation 24 CFR, Section 964.11, states, quote, "HUD promotes resident participation and the active involvement of citizens in all aspects of Housing Authority's overall mission and operation." So that is kind of a goal or philosophy that's spelled out black and white. So just a couple of points just to conclude. I think what I'm proposing is pretty straightforward. It's changing the Housing Authority to add new members. It doesn't change the Housing Authority any other way. It doesn't change the Housing Authority Board or management. I would say it's minimally disruptive to the overall system. There are other jurisdictions in our region that have larger boards and have more elected tenant members. And the basic point, which is not about any specific issue, but is a general point, I think that the policymaking, the oversight, the community outreach, and the tenant participation responsibilities of our Housing Authority would all be improved very clearly if we had more tenants serving on the board. And that's due to personal experiences of tenants and the natural interest in the well-being of their own community. I want to urge you to think about how Housing Authority is less an agency or board, and it's partially a community. So that's some information to kind of ground you, and I'll tell you that the committee on Community Resources heard this. I actually felt, I won't speak for the committee, but I felt that maybe they're, maybe they were a little bit swayed. I felt like there were many questions from the beginning, and towards the end, the committee was talking about planning a couple of public forums. The way I look about, look at this is I think this has to be a community conversation where tenants and the city council, and the mayor, and others discuss what's best in a reform to put forward. So that would be my hope. And of course, this committee is a key part of that process also.
Any other questions? Actually, I'd be grateful to hear. I've gotten a lot, several reports about the discussion in Community Resources, since someone, some upside.
Before we do that, just, because I have a, just a clarification question. So as I understand legislative, it was continued in Community Resources, right? It's still in that committee?
It's still continued, yes.
So am I correct in assuming that we, this committee won't take any action until it comes out of committee?
Well, we could. It's probably not the, I mean.
I think, I thought it was written in our rules that.
Well, it could possibly be amended in Community Resources, in which case.
Yeah.
So.
It's kind of like we were waiting on the TPC's recommendation for the other ones, that we're waiting for the Community Resources.
Yeah, my feeling is we should continue it till we get an answer from Community Resources.
Well, just in terms of keeping with our past practice of being the last committee to.
Yeah, because if they make a recommendation, we want to.
I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't hear, hear from, for example, I mean, I still have to hear from, but I'm just curious as to whether we actually act or make recommendations to the full council at this point, but rather we wait until the other committees to whom it's been referred.
I have a letter from Councilor Bidwell where he outlines something about nominated state Senator Joe Comfort would be considering putting forward something similar to this, would be statewide. And he has said that I asked Councilor Donald if he would consider withdrawing this order in its current form to allow for conversation with colleagues about modifications.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, with, as I've said many times, withdrawing an order is actually the opposite of being conducive to discussion.
Right. I don't disagree with that.
Absolutely.
But, yes, so the answer to that was pending, apparently. I now have a clear definitive answer.
Well, we also, Councilor O'Donnell touched on this, we're, we're planning in Community Resources two community meetings with very direct outreach to the seven different communities that are part of the Housing Authority. And that will be kind of, those will present opportunities for people, including nominated officials like Joe Comfort and Lindsay Sabadosa and so forth, to, to come and to hear from the actual communities. So I don't think that there's any reason to consider withdrawal of something like this at this point, when we have already kind of imagined the mechanisms by which we're going to get community input.
These proposed fora, are they tenant-specific, given the fact?
No, they're going to be open to the community, but we're going to do very targeted outreach to people who live in the communities about which we're going to be speaking. But I do think that especially since we have the solicitor here, and he's very, very happy to be here, as he said when he died here, we could generate some of the questions that came up in Community Resources, and Councilor Nash is here, and Councilor O'Donnell can all kind of, you know, talk about what, what we wanted to hear from the solicitor, and that can be information for us at this stage, but really, I think we have a much longer process ahead of us.
Okay, well, let's, let's take advantage of the time that we have. We will not act on this one, but it is, it's on the floor, and the motion is to continue. Right, are you correct that you wanted to continue in this?
Ultimately, I was going to move that we continue until the other committee has done with their work. And I, it's perfectly prudent to leave it alive, order, so we can discuss it, and if more comes, or our parent, heir apparent to the state senate shows up and wants to come to your meeting and make recommendations, that's fine. I would like, though, to ask Councilor Sewell some questions.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I would like to take away.
But I would ultimately move to continue it till we hear, till the other committee's done.
Can I also point out that, not to put them on the spot, but I believe there are some residents here who might benefit from hearing from, whatever order that.
Right, okay. Well, good. So let's, let's keep currently this item open for purposes of discussion. Councilor Sewell?
Well, I, I understand from the draft minutes of Community Resources that Council Bidwell and Councilor Nash particularly had some questions about conflicts of interests and about. and about the legislative process, how this actually happens mechanically. So let me start there first, because as President O'Donnell said, the legislature has very specifically told every housing authority how it's going to be organized, and that's like the hallmark of occupying the field at the state level. That means we have no room to legislate locally, because the legislature has taken it over and told us exactly what we're going to do. If, if the city council were to pass this order and the mayor were to carry it forward and ask our representatives to take it to Boston, and the legislature looked positively upon it, they certainly could do what, what's being proposed by President O'Donnell. I mean, this is within the legislative authority of, of the state legislature. They created this five-member board, and they can, if properly asked by the city, they can pass a special act. Now, I hesitate only because this is a little odd, because we are proposing to pass a special act about a different political body. And so this is not the city, this is not a city body. This is a quasi, what would they call it? It's a statutory body, and by statute, the only, the only function the city has is for the mayor to make appointments to the, to the board. Other than that, it's totally out of the city's control. So I don't know how the legislature would look at a request for special legislation about an entity that is not the city. That's the first issue. If the legislature saw fit to do it, I believe it could. Conflict of interests are a little bit more complicated.
Helen, on that point, though, so this is not a home rule petition per se?
It is a home rule petition.
It is?
Yes. Because a home rule petition being defined as being requested to pass a law that applies only to one jurisdiction, to one city or town. The legislature has complete authority to make laws that apply to two or more cities and towns in the Commonwealth. When it comes to one, the legislature can't act unless that community has asked them to act, and that's a home rule petition.
But in this case, it's a home rule petition to not make changes in and of our municipal government, but essentially to impose a change on a legislatively created entity that's separate from the city.
That's right.
But it has the same name, Northampton.
And, you know, it has a little overlap, because we, you know, the majority of the, of the members are appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council. So, I mean, I, I've said to Ryan that this is, this, you know, this is a little bit different, and I don't have all the answers. I know what the questions are, but I don't really have answers to these questions. But, you know, if the, if the legislature wanted to see the Northampton Housing Authority increase, membership increase, I believe it could get it done.
And you were about to speak on the conflict of interest. What's, what's the, what's the conflict of interest, Ben?
Well, if, once you appoint tenants to a board that is making decisions that have economic impact on the tenants, that is an inherent conflict of interest, because, you know, a, a public official, a municipal employee, which housing authority members are, cannot participate in a particular matter in which he, family members, employers have a financial interest. So the, by necessity, the housing authority board does make decisions that have financial impacts on tenants. And so I did speak with a lawyer at the State Ethics Commission. Now, if these are deemed to be appointed employees, then there, then the appointing authority can issue a waiver. So anytime that the housing authority is going to discuss anything that foreseeably will have a financial impact on the tenants of the housing authority, the tenant members of the board would need to seek exemptions or waivers from their appointing authority in order to avoid the conflict of self-dealing.
But as Councilor O'Donnell points out, this is not without precedent. There are tenant-occupied boards.
There are, and the housing authority is a board that has a tenant on it, right, by statute, and this would apply to that tenant as well.
Right.
But now we are, now we are essentially putting a supermajority of tenants in charge, so it's a little bit different. It's not one tenant who has to recuse. And, you know, and I think that President O'Donnell will tell you that it is theoretically possible that the governor, I think the governor's done that right now, has appointed a tenant, and so there's two tenant members on the, on the board right now. And I guess it's theoretically possible that all of the, the members could be tenants, could be, but this is mandating it, and so it's, you know, so it draws the eye to that issue very, very quickly. And so let me just finish that thought. The proposed order is, I believe, for these six members to be elected by the tenants. I don't know how the Ethics Commission is going to look at this, because if they look at it as, as an elected position, then there is no exemption, because there's no appointing authority. If they look at it as an appointment, I'm not sure how they'll do that, because the appointment is made by the tenants, so it's, I don't have answers to those questions, but I'm not saying that this couldn't be done, and it will create some other issues. The alternative, of course, is to have a companion piece of special legislation to very specifically deal with this in a way that you, as a legislative body, wishes to have it dealt with. You know, that's another possibility.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Just to underscore that, as the solicitor says, I mean, the conflict of interest issue is a problem for current law. I mean, we really just need one additional member of the housing authority out of five to be a tenant, and suddenly you would have a perpetual issue to think about. I can only guess, although I don't have the information, that when the legislature acted, the legislature took action on this to change the rules for towns and have one of the ten, one of the members be tenant elected. I can only believe that the Department of Housing and Community Development contemplated this or are still contemplating this, because towns will have regular tenant, elected tenants who are not appointed. So that's something in the process, and that could be a guide for us.
But they're elected town-wide, though, right? It's not just the tenants of the housing authority.
I believe the law changed it to be an election by the residents of the housing authority.
Just one of them, right?
Correct. And the other three counselors, as you say, are elected by the town.
Just a question.
So in the instance of our current status, the mayor appointed a tenant representative whose appointing authority is the mayor. The other one, though, was appointed by the governor.
Correct.
So the one who's appointed by a mayor could seek the exemption to vote on things.
From the mayor.
From the mayor. The other poor soul would have to get the governor's attention to get, yeah, which is...
And that's, that's the status as we see here today. But, I mean, I don't represent the housing authority, so I have no involvement in this at all. And so, you know, that, that's the current situation, that two of the members of the housing authority...
So forty percent of the current board are tenants.
Correct. Need to be thinking carefully about their, their own financial interests when that comes up as board members. That's definitely true. But as you point out, there is an appointing authority for those two to get, you know, their waivers from. And in the situation of a town that President O'Donnell raised, that would only, that would only be one member who would be excluded, because there's no exemption for an elected member or a member who has no appointing authority. So in the town situation, that would only be one member, because any other tenant member would have an appointing authority. So once you have a majority, like, like this proposal, you would have a majority of the board with no appointing authority, with no exemption, no appointing authority to give an exemption. It's, it's complicated. Then the rule of necessity might kick in.
That's what I was going to say.
We're, we're, we're all in uncharted territory here, so I'm just telling you what, what the issues are, and...
I mean, academically, as you point out, the problem already exists. The potential for conflict already exists without, without any advice from the legislature, it seems. And, but we've been here before with issues of conflict in open meeting law, discussions with the Ethics Board, where they're really not comfortable giving clear answers relative to the questions we have, so... That, that becomes an issue provided this actually passes, so, but the abstract right now, just discussing it, but the...
I, I just want to say, we're not going to get clear answers to this conflict, these conflict issues, I don't think, until this passes, and then there is a situation where a member is looking at, at a potential conflict and contacts the State Ethics Commission and finds out.
Yeah, exactly. They won't offer this advice for something that's theoretical.
It's too abstract.
Yeah. Councilor Nash?
Yeah, but it seems that conflict is already present, that because the, we have tenant members already, and we haven't quite figured this out, and I think it's something we need to talk about and figure out, because they're already in the position of making deciding votes on, you know, things that might benefit them.
I have no role in figuring that out, because I don't represent the housing authority. I don't represent any of them.
No, I'm just saying that it's already on the table. It's, it's already in existence, whether it's, you know, in, in a minority, the way it's now constructed, or in a majority under the proposed order here.
Right, but I, but the, the point is, in order to make the appeal to the State Ethics Board to have them render an opinion, actually, it would have to come from the housing authority. Coming from us, because we have no agency over them, that ours is merely theoretical and a pending law that we're working on, or a petition, basically. So they're going to go, thanks, don't bother us, because it's not something you're, you're actually, you're not dealing with an existing law, you're dealing with fabricating a law. But, I mean, I think it's actually worth emphasizing to the housing authority that they do have the standing conflict, a potential conflict that would...
It's already there.
That's what I'm saying. Decisions could be challenged based on the potential violations of what might be construed as a conflict of interest.
I, I would be surprised if there are not opinions from the Ethics Commission about existing housing authorities. I can tell you that there are regulations to that. That kind of set the parameters.
Councilor...
I just wanted to address kind of a philosophical underpinnings here, too, because we went very quickly to talking about the conflict of interest, all of the kind of legal ramifications, and it's something that we talked about at length, I'd say, in the Community Resources Committee, which is this concept of having the people who live in these communities able to have influence on the decisions of the housing authority and the importance of that, and how a lot of the people that live in housing authority buildings and communities are people who have historically been marginalized because of disability, race, income, status, all those things. And so this, the, I think the philosophical underpinnings, the social, sociopolitical underpinnings here are really important in that it, it, it's a piece of work that we would contribute to as a council in moving this forward, that attempts to give voice to people about their own communities and how they want their own communities to look. And one of the things that came up, and you probably read this in the minutes, the draft minutes, is that Councilor O'Donnell brought up the example of condo housing, where the tenants and the people who own condos, even if they're not on site, they're the ones most often that make up the board of a condo association, so that they, in fact, have this ability to influence decisions about the place where they actually live their lives. So this is a kind of an, an example of how this legislation, this order and how this change would affect the people in housing authority communities.
There are tenants here today again, so I'll stop hogging them.
Do you guys want to speak to this?
Yeah, I would love to.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Edgaz Alkanset. I am, I grew up here in Northampton, and currently live at Hampshire Heights. I grew up in Florence Heights into late eighties, and I've been very connected with both of these communities, Florence Heights and Hampshire Heights, over the last thirty-one years. Once we moved out, well, let me just, first of all, start by saying that, in my opinion, public housing is sort of a, a stepping stone to the next level, is, is where you are sort of in transition. For, in, in my opinion, the way I look at public housing, because it was my experience growing up and the way that my parents did it, is that you're not necessarily thinking that you're going to stay there the rest of your life, but rather something that will get you by until you get yourself and family into a position to be able to buy a home or move on to the next thing. My parents were a perfect example of that. We came here, my dad and my mom, both had a eighth, eighth grade and ninth grade education, respectively, and they came here, learned the language, went to school, learned the language, went, graduated from that, went to Holy Community College, got their associate's degree, all while living in public housing, and then later on ended up getting the necessary training to become a, a school bus driver and a cafeteria person. Not, not long after that, they were able to purchase their first home. And so my parents had lived the American dream, but it was thanks to that stepping stone, when we lived in Florence Heights, and the type of resources that were available to families then, and also the type of collaboration between the housing authority and the existing tenant associations at the time. At the time, we had a lot more. I don't think that there are many tenant associations now that are working with the housing authority. Not a lot to say about that, but I don't want to sort of go off track with that. The fact of the matter is that we don't have good working tenant associations, and part of the reason is the resistance from the housing authority to have those tenant associations be collaborative and be working on behalf of the residents. Having said that, I also believe that, well, let me just back up to what I was going to say earlier. Over the, since we moved out of Florence Heights, I, I continue to do community work at both Florence Heights and Hampshire Heights. In nineteen ninety-seven, I received a grant by Cooley Dickinson Hospital to do a summer program at Florence Heights. It was very successful. At the end of the summer, I was able to report back to the Healthy Communities Committee as part of the Cooley Dickinson Hospital. They were so impressed with the work that was done there that they actually asked me to become part of the committee, and I served that committee for five years. Over the last twenty, twenty-five years, I've served on many boards, including Valley CVC back in the early nineties. We were responsible for re, remodeling this building right back here with all the, back when the staircases were sort of falling. I was the vice president of the Valley CVC at the time. I've also served on many boards. Currently, I serve on the Housing Partnership Committee, and I've participated in a lot of these boards, and in my experience, they're usually bigger boards. And in my opinion, in this organization with a size like this, I think having only five members is sort of inefficient. So on that aspect, I really think this is a good idea. The other reason why I think it's a good idea is because having residents, more residents be part of a, the board of an organization speaks to what the counselor was talking about earlier, residents being able to make decisions on what's going to affect the livelihood and their families. And I actually see absolutely no conflict of interest when it comes to that, because that's the whole point, is for people to be able to make decisions about... that's the whole point, is for people to be able to make decisions about how things are going to be operating and how they're going to affect them in life. I couldn't think of a way in which any particular member would benefit directly financially because decisions that are made at that level, I go to all of their board meetings every month. I'm very involved with public housing in the last 10, 15 years. So I know that, I've never seen a decision where I see that somebody individually gained any sort of financial gain from decisions that were made at the board. In fact, that's the whole point. Usually, the way that most housing authorities operate is they have tenant associations and then the Housing Authority meets with those associations every three months, quarterly. By the way, that hasn't happened in years here in Northampton. And they discuss, the tenant association and the board, or the Housing Authority, discuss plans, how the funds coming from state or federal funds are going to be spent, capital plan, capital improvement plan, all of those types of things get actually negotiated between the tenant associations and the Housing Authority. So all of these decisions affect the residents, and in the recent past, there has been a lot of issues. I know the air conditioner one was one that was very public, but there are a lot of many other issues that have not been made public that are currently problems with the current structure at this local housing authority. And so part of the reason why I'm here is because I totally support this order, and I know it hasn't been done around the state in this way, but one of my points that I made last week at the meeting was that we're an amazing city and we are trendsetters. We have done things in the past that no other city has done, and we have been able to put legislation forward and make changes that really improve the lives of residents, of our local residents. So as difficult as it may seem, I think it's a great thing for us to be having these discussions and to at least consider them and then, you know, leave it up to the state to see whether, you know, they agree with it or not. But I know from my personal experience in doing the work that I've been doing here, I've also done many cleanups at both of the properties, and I currently serve on the board of the tenant association at Hampshire Heights. I know that this would be a huge step in the right direction in terms of being able to solve a lot of problems that are currently happening. If you talk to, and I plan on bringing more residents if we have another public discussion about it, this is kind of last minute, and I did invite some folks, but they weren't able to come, but I think it would be a great opportunity for people to come and talk about why they favor this idea. Everyone I've spoken to at both properties, Florence Heights and Hampshire Heights, and I always speak about Florence Heights and Hampshire Heights, but I'm also connected to the senior where a lot of our elders live. I used to run a Latino social club at Salvo House on Tuesday nights through Casa Latina, and both my parents and my grandmother used to live there. So I have a lot of experience also with what our elders face in our public housing community. But I don't want to take any more of your time. I really appreciate you folks even considering having this conversation, and again, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Come on up.
Thanks, Tom. Tom Burton, Salvo House, Thomas Street. I just, very briefly, just want to, I really like the idea that Brian has introduced this. It's, the air conditioning issue was simply the last of the many, you know, issues that have come up over the last five years that I've lived there, but probably the most serious because it involved people's lives and threatened people's lives. And, you know, the director isn't different to this. Until she's called, until there's something in the newspaper about it, she doesn't respond. So there's a necessity for the people in the community to be directly able to write her on her because, you know, we had nothing to say on how she was picked. We did, but then she was chosen by you guys and the mayor, not by, you know, we had nothing to say about it. And the consequences of that have been a long train of, you know, dick hats from people, from someone in the board who rubber stamps a lot of the stuff that she does. So it's important that we have tenants on this board and that people have an actual control over their lives. That's basically the crux of all of this. I don't know what the next issue will be, but there will be another issue, whether it'll be as serious as this one or, I don't know. Kind of on a six-month schedule over there, the next thing will pop up and, you know, oh my God, they make serious. In fact, they are. Anyway, that's my, and I really hope you guys will approve of this, send it out to the other committee and send it out to the council, you know, maybe with Joe Cumberford and Lindsey, whether we can get this also adjusted in the legislature and do something. And I realize it's kind of a long road, but a necessary one. A necessary one because this summer it actually involved whether or not people could die. So it was that serious. And that's not hyperbole, that was really true. Anyway, thank you.
Tom, just for the record, we are not the appointing authority.
Oh, I know that, but you guys, but the council rubber stamps the people that are on the board and then...
We do approve the board members. We don't approve, we have no say on the director, the choice of the director, hiring the director at all, neither does the mayor for that matter.
I take it back.
Okay. I just want that clear.
But you guys do, you know, it's like, then there's a chain, then there's a chain of consequences because it wasn't my, exactly my job to dick stamp, it wasn't mine. And it gets removed a number of times. I mean, it wasn't exactly the mayor's job either, but...
It's one of those deals where we don't have authority, we have influence.
Yeah, I mean, the influence, the influence is not to be underestimated.
Oh, no.
The influence of the newspaper is what actually stopped her in the tracks. So it's the influence, the bully pulpit of the, I would hope that the mayor generally responded with boilerplate first. So, but if people use their moral authority as representatives of the community, it does have an impact, it does have an impact on her, it does have an impact on them. They were blindsided by this, I said. They had known at the meeting that they had after this first broke, regarding the air conditioning issue, there was no, there was no, they said, well, she said, "Well, I didn't have to tell you guys that because I could make that decision." And she pulled out her rulebook. So it was, you know, the board members have one, then they print a, you know, rulebook for the directors, too. So there was that, and they said, "Yes, we do," and I said, "No, we don't." So that was, you know, she kind of left it with that. But still, you know, as these things get removed, that's why it's important to have the people who actually live in the community having a say, and that's not a conflict of interest, that's a direct interest, you know, and as far as financial things go. I mean, the amount of money that you pay as tenants, which is the basic financial, it's not set up as a formula. So we don't have a, nobody, whether you're a tenant has a say about it. There's a formula that you use based upon your income. So it's not something which is simply the result of, you know, that you can manipulate. I could lower my rent if I got this screw. That can't happen, that wouldn't happen. So it's a bit of a canard to say that there's a conflict of interest. I think it's not really, not something that's practical on a, you know, on a working basis with that. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks for proposing that.
So where we sit now is that actually we're going to continue this. It seems that there's going to be ample opportunities, Edgardo, to have people come and talk about this, and Tom, that we could, at the very least, the very least, Community Resources is going to have another meeting on it, we're going to have another meeting on it, then there's two meetings in the council. That's if everything goes as normal, and it sounds like this may morph as a gov, so it seems to me there will be opportunity. Counselor O'Donnell, you had something you want to say, but?
No, not really. I just thought you might have other questions. But I appreciate your consideration. I mean, I do acknowledge it's an experiment.
Oh, I...
You know, I mean, but, you know, it's, I'll tell you, I mean, ever, just today, this is a true story, which you know because the story is not very entertaining, but I was in Florence downtown just running errand, and a woman came up to me who lives in public housing, and it turns out I had talked to her on the phone before, and she was catching me up on the issues she brought up. And all of us get calls from people all the time in public housing, and it's really difficult because, as multiple people have said, these institutions really are sort of like legal islands, and we need to build a bridge to those islands so that there could be greater accountability. Because oftentimes, while we can call up the Housing Authority and urge action, as the chair has said, we have no formal authority over what goes on. But I like the idea of Northampton leading the way, as Mr. Consell said, with an innovative proposal, which might be hard to do, but I think there's a lot of opportunity to discuss this because the people who live in public housing are citizens of the city of Northampton, just like everyone else, and they are often invisible, they often are voiceless, but they deserve some influence over the policies that affect their lives. So I really appreciate the consideration of the committee.
It's been my ongoing belief, and in fact, actually aptly described by people speaking testifying today, that there's actually a de facto disenfranchisement of people who live within the communities that are subsidized housing. And you should not sacrifice your ability to appeal to an authority that will render a decision that would hopefully benefit you. And this has been our frustration, actually, you know, as you think about how votes break down. A lot of people in Florence Heights, Hampshire Heights, Meadowbrook don't vote particularly because there's no manifestation of any effect of their vote on their, by their representatives. They, I used to represent Hampshire Heights, and the frustration there expressed continually was that the removal that you described, and the frustration and the impotency of trying to explain, "All I can do is make a call. I have no authority, I can't tell anyone what to do, I can't, I can't even make a law or an ordinance changing anything like this." So it seems to me, and I think the parallel with condo associations is apt, I think that's very appropriate, but, so I'm looking forward to the conversations, and they will continue, it seems. Counselor...
I would make that motion, we continue this until Community Resources is finished.
Just, I mean, I was hoping that we could make use of the time of Alan here just to clear up any other...
The other question.
Yeah, so for example, and I guess I didn't get a chance to review all of the minutes, but I think that this probably came up in Community Resources.
Absolutely.
So I think that there was a change from instruct the mayor or, that was changed to request.
Directed to requested.
Oh, instead of directed, and that's because...
You can't direct the man to do that.
We can't direct him, okay. So ultimately, the wording is that the order would be that we request.
Authorized and requested.
Authorized.
Because the mayor can't do this without your authorization. That's actually what you're giving the mayor, is authorization to seek special legislation.
That's what it reads now.
Right, okay.
That's how it reads now.
Okay.
It's an order that the mayor has authorized and requested to seek state.
Oh, okay. Is the mayor's authorized and requested to seek state legislation. Okay, so, and was it, so what if the mayor does not, you know, I mean, we can make that request, but this goes nowhere if the mayor chooses not to move forward?
That's true.
Okay. So really, all we can do is, so that's why I'm curious, why it's called an order. It's just, as an order sounds like we're ordering, you know.
Maybe us to comply, so...
Yeah.
That's what I asked.
But there's no, there's no requirement for, there's no requirement for compliance.
No, it could be a resolution.
Even then, that's a bit less.
That would pass muster at the legislature because it's not enforceable. A resolution is just a statement of your current view on a matter.
So actually theoretically, if the mayor were to do this on his own, he wouldn't even need him, he wouldn't need a council board.
Can't, needs a council order.
Oh, okay, he needs to be authorized by the council. Okay, okay.
We can authorize him, but we can't.
Make him.
We can do it.
Same thing, for instance, with appropriations. You can appropriate money, you can't make them spend it.
So my understanding, to follow up on what Murray was asking, is that this is standard for home...
Absolutely, just standard.
So it's important to know.
Okay, those were some of the things I was hoping to get some clarity about.
Any other questions?
I had a really quick follow-up. Before Counselor Murray even mentioned this concept of doing a resolution and that not having the authority to authorize the mayor, it wouldn't be candid enough to a home rule petition, is directed towards you, Counselor O'Donnell. Would it be useful, is this enough of a statement that this is the will of the city council if it should pass and we authorize the mayor to speak to the legislature, that we also accompany it with a resolution that gets more specific in terms of why this is a goal or aspiration of the council of Northampton?
It's an interesting concept. I hadn't thought about it in those terms. I view the order as sort of a vehicle that could be useful for a more expansive discussion. So to me, the order was an appropriate enough vehicle, and just in our conversations about it, although they wouldn't be written down anywhere, I think we would elucidate some of the issues as we have today. So that's my thought right off the bat. I would stick with the order rather than double it up with a resolution, although I'm always open if counselors want a draft one or touch on related issues, you know, I mean, that was my assumption, Counselor.
Is there a second on the continuance?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of continuing to our next meeting, please say aye.
I guess I'm wondering whether we, I mean, our practice, our standard practice has been to always wait until this goes through, so maybe instead of saying until our next meeting?
Until...
Until it comes out of all of the...
That was initially what it said.
That's the motion. I'll continue to that.
The Community Resources has forwarded their recommendation.
Right, because there's Community Resources, they hold a couple of...
Yeah, forums.
Forums, and maybe other things that could be brought.
Okay, so I'll reiterate, the continuance till we receive the recommendation from Community Resources. That was a...
And we did acknowledge in that Community Resources meeting that we have a 60-day window, I think, within which we, 60 days, within which we have to complete the two community fora and the follow-up meeting of the Community Resources Committee.
But that's a rule, it can be amended, right?
You could ask for more time, right?
Yeah.
But the goal of the Community Resources Committee was to get the fora done before that period of time and have a second meeting.
If you work backwards and want to finish it roughly by the end of the year, just for practical purposes, because hopefully we'll have a state delegation not long after that. So if the months of October, November can be used for discussion and the council can vote in December or consider voting in December, that would be a reasonable timeline. And I think the rule says, you, Community Resources says 60 days, whereupon legislative matters, then it's an additional 30. So it sounds like ample time.
That would bring us right up to the December, kind of when we're hopefully going to have state delegation.
You could act earlier, too.
Okay, so on the floor is the continuance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No objections. All right. All right, now, as I said, the first two items, which is now we bump up to the top of the agenda, items 1, 2, 3, and 1, 2, 5, we're going to have to look until the 18th page. So that brings us to item 18.137, this is an order... So that brings us to item 18.137, it's an order in relation to parking on King Street. That's being with a positive recommendation for transportation parking. Thank you, guys, thank you very much. Accept the motion, put this on the floor. Discussion? Councilor Nash, is there anything new that's come up since we, the first six times we've discussed this?
This is okay, 115-minute spot in front of Sutter Room. And he got a positive recommendation from TPC.
15 minutes, right. Any discussion?
I'm just glad to know that we have something called Merrick Lane in Northampton.
Oh, yeah.
I never knew.
Yes.
There's a lot of weird little streets.
Yes. All right, all those in favor of sending this forward with a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? Okay, thank you. All right. I'll show my computer. Next up is, we did a Dara Place, we did democratic representation, this is, we did cemeteries, this is okay. Item 152, this is an ordinance to amend Chapter 9 of the Court of Ordinances by adding Section 9-1 and subsection 9-2, let's just refer to the council, referred by the council in August. And... Is there a motion, put this on the floor? This is essentially subsection, post subsection 9-1 is that special committees established to conduct a review of the city charter, we conduct it at 10-year intervals and the year is ending in 8, 9, in accordance with Section 10-6 of the city charter. And subsection 9-2 is membership and the term, the special committee shall be comprised of nine members who shall be appointed for a term limiting no earlier than January 1 and no later than July 1 and a year ending in a 9. And one member shall be a member of the city council, appointed by the city council president. And one member shall be an employee of the executive branch of the city, appointed by the mayor. Seven members shall be citizens of the city, one from each ward, appointed by the mayor through confirmation of the city council in accordance with Section 2-10 of the city charter. All members of the special committee shall be registered voters in the city and the special committee shall be under the supervision of the city solicitor. And the special committee shall convene no later than 30 days after its appointment, hold meetings as necessary, and follow the city clerk no later than December 31st of the year ending in a 9. A report summarizes the special committee's recommendations with any proposed revisions of the city charter contained therein. And the special committee shall dissolve the policy mentioned in this report to the city. Alan, you want to speak to briefly?
Yes. I worked with the mayor on putting this together. It's in format very much like the ordinance review committee and there was the retirement or the compensation review committee, I can't remember which one it was, also organized this way. I can report to you that the current mayor's intention is to ask each ward counselor to make a recommendation of someone from their ward, just as he's done in the past in other situations, and so that's what he intends to do here. This seemed like a reasonable way to proceed. I'm going to answer any questions. And I would also ask you all, if you have any, if you made any notes in your home version of the charter about things that are problematic to you, I'd love to hear them.
Any questions? Yep, Councilor Donald?
Oh, does the ordinance say that a ward counselor will suggest?
No.
Okay, it could.
It could.
Yep, it could, if you want. Yeah, I mean, we've come up against it, we're up to it, but it's hard to believe actually, but the fact is, it's time for charter review and certainly we flagged a few things, more than a few things, so. And hopefully by the end of the year, ending in 9, we'll actually have representation. Should any of the discrepancies come up that we want to petition, again, the legislature for the opportunity to change those portions of the charter would look like a knee-changing. I would suggest that if, I haven't heard any proposals for amendment, could certainly be imagined on the floor if anyone's inclined that way. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor moving forward with a favorable recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? Okay. I believe, I believe, come on, come on.
I would first move we approve our minutes.
Oh, thank you very much, yes, that's right, we skipped right over there. Good catch, yes. So there's a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
And a second, that's in the minutes of July 9. All those in favor of approving minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we have one other item and that's to deal with the dates, the possible conflict of October and November.
Right, right, right. This is, so, as you know, thank you, Alan, we have two potential conflicts on holidays that the problem, of course, having meetings on Mondays. All federal holidays, we fall on those now, so, how's everyone's calendar look?
Hold on a sec. So we're usually the second Monday, right? We're usually the second Monday. And the second, I think for Indigenous Peoples' Day, that is October, that must be October 8.
Yeah, that's something.
Yeah.
Can we do the 9th Tuesday?
Just have to check if available, look to your council chambers, the hearing room would be open. Yeah, I'm not sure that I, well, yeah, at 5:00 on the night, it's, gosh, um, 2 or 4, I think.
Councilor Murphy, how's that look for you?
Oh, yeah, I'd have to do it on that Tuesday. Theoretically, it's okay with me.
The 9th?
The 9th would be okay.
5 o'clock.
The TPC's the 3rd Tuesday or is it the 2nd? I thought it was the 4th.
The 3rd.
Oh, you moved it to the 3rd, okay. So that doesn't conflict if you sleep in.
Not that I care.
Okay, so, October 9th, Tuesday, October 9th, and we'll try and find it.
And then for November?
And then we have November 12.
No, oh, I see, because it's the 2nd, yeah, I see, okay. So it's whether, would we do similarly, try a meeting on the 13th?
Yeah, it'll be after the election, obviously, so.
I don't do, just 5, 3.
Councilor Murphy, how's that one for you?
Looks fine for me.
So Tuesday the 13th?
Yeah, add one day to each one and we're good.
Yeah, that's certainly the easiest.
Change from 5:00 PM, council chambers.
Yeah, if at all possible, that'd be great. And if not, then certainly the hearing room would be fine, so.
Well, no, Veterans Day is on the 11th.
Yeah, it's on the 11th, so.
So we're talking about, first of all, I want to get this, so October 9th instead of October 8.
And November 13th instead of the 2. All right, so, there, still is that motion to adjourn, is there a second?
You bet.
Well, I think you made it.
No, I didn't.
Didn't you make the motion?
No.
Oh, you did, okay. No, I didn't, okay. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.